All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Thursday, October 5th, 2023 Planning Board Meeting. If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, introduction to board members. We have Don Ganarelli on the far left, and then Jerry Graybill, myself, Michael Aru, Les Bodwell, and Rick Rains. We also have Irish Griffith, the code enforcement officer, Terry Wilson, the assistant to coding and planning, and Hannah Watson from SNPDC. Next is going to be the first public hearing for conditional use Beaver Dam Campground, 551 School Street, R-53 Lot 13A, Zone R3, Walsh Engineering.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Bill Walsh with Walsh Engineering. I think we're, and I'm going to turn to Terry a little bit here. We have submitted a package, and I don't know if you've seen that last week, but I think it's going to be carried on the next week or next meeting, maybe? Okay. So I think we've got, we're kind of in the same place, but we have heard those four, five comments that the board had last time. Pickleball noise, parking, snow storage, ENS, and an environmental review, and all of those are in that package, so you will be getting all of that information. So happy to go through it if you want, but if you want, if you want to wait until next time, I'll leave that up to you.
Wait until next time. Just finish the open public comment.
Okay.
It's a public hearing.
Yep. Okay. So just see if anyone has to speak and make their comments.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Laura Sheldon, and I just have a question regarding the Beaver Dam Campground. One of the questions that was being addressed last time was whether or not there was enough parking, whether or not the parking was going to be for an actual restaurant or just for the camp sites. And so obviously, I think that that needs to be addressed as far as bringing forth any public concerns there may be about the parking in that place. Again, if it is a restaurant that is open, in the current plans that we have seen, again, obviously, it sounds like something's changing, but in that current plan, there are only enough parking sites for the campground sites. They were then saying that surplus parking was going to happen on the septic tanks, which apparently that road was only supposed to be for golf carts coming and going, but now if they're going to have parking, is that happening? And if they are having a restaurant, how many people are coming in and out of that driveway regularly? And I know from my own experience, when I was in college, I waitressed, and we would seat that restaurant six to eight times in a day. So if they're having a seating of 50, how many servings? You know, is that going to be, is it going to be a takeout restaurant where people aren't even needing to stay for an hour? You know, is that going to be continuous traffic coming in and going out? How much traffic is that going to create for that very tightly congested little space that is already so dangerous, has already had so many accidents in the last few years? So I think that issue of the restaurant and whether or not there's actually going to be a need for greater parking that is already there really needs to be addressed for that public concern to come forward.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have a question. This, I brought this up last time about my concern about this ultimately becoming some sort of mobile home park or something. I'm still very concerned about the fact that we are creating, they are creating essentially a little village of mini houses. I haven't heard any talk about how long the rentals are going to be. Does this have any impact on the school system? Are there going to be children there? Are there going to be families that potentially could be living there for a year or two years or however long they want to lease these things? I would really like to hear from somebody as to what the plan is. I mean, like I say, we're creating a little village, and I just kind of want to know what it is. There's something about this that just doesn't ring true, and I really want to somehow peel this onion back and find out what the master plan is here because it just doesn't make a ton of sense to me, but maybe someday I'll figure it out.
Thank you.
My name's Dave K. Theusen. I abut this property. I would say about eight years ago, I was required to do an environmental impact study on my property that abuts this. In that, they found blending turtles, which shut me down. It's understood. I don't have an issue with that. When I read this, the vernal pool that they said didn't contain anything, well, I was 20 feet away from that pulling blending turtles out of traps with the biologist, marking them, taking blood samples. You know, I understood that. Today, I talked to the biologist at the Wildlife Fisheries, and the biologist for turtles said he hasn't been here to do a study. He said, but he thinks he knows who did. They brought a dog, but that dog doesn't do blending turtles. It does other type of turtles. So I think this impact study was insufficient. And in so, if that study is insufficient, the 250-foot buffer has to be regulated, and they're working with this in within this 250-foot buffer. The, I looked at the drawings, with that buffer, there's over 2,000 linear foot of excavation that has to happen for electrical, water, and sewer. The sewer that's there is adequate for what was there, for a 10 to 10-month, 10-week to three-month period. The sewer that's designed, and it just was brought up, is it good for more than three months, six months? Is it good for one person, for every person in that restaurant? We don't even know how big that thing? Well, I know how many linear square foot it is, but I don't know how many seats it's going to have. So that, all that has to be figured out in order to design an adequate septic system. How much impact is it going to do on the water with the restaurant and all these sites? And I already, Janet Mills pushed something out two years ago about these homes, and she said if they stay in place, well, the law passed, if they stay in place more than 180 days, code enforcement officer has to do an inspection. If they're hard piped, hardwired, has to monitor the septic to see that it's hooked up properly, then it's taxable property. It's not a tech, like registered in a car. It's taxable property. These are some of the issues that I saw. I know there's a main erosion and sediment control issue there. I don't know if it took into consideration all of this linear footage that they're doing. The septics that were over on the northerly side were just dumped into the old septic system through that cart. Now they've got a trench all the way over. Can I turn mine off? Sorry. That's okay. But they, now they're going to be piped all the way across the whole thing. That's where I get the linear footage out. There's also the pools. There's also the bathhouse. There's a lot to consider in this about erosion control and the fact that there is a 250-foot buffer. I told the guy from the DEP, and I told the guy from Fisheries that we were having a meeting tonight, but nobody could come in one day notice. But they are very interested, especially the fact that they didn't even know this was happening. So that's, that's one of the issues there. So I want to know when they put these model homes in, if every one of these is on a float, a concrete pad, concrete pad for each one, installed greater than 180 days. The code enforcement officer inspects for stable ground and inspects for utility connections. I talked about the taxation after 180 days. And I can give anybody the, the main house bill, LD 1530, May 5th, 2021, that said all And these model homes, are they going to be rented weekly? We going to have Section 8 housing allowed in there? Is that how this is going to go? Or is it going to be a glorified mobile home park? Good, that was very good there, asking that question. Working hours. I think I covered everything I wanted to know, but I appreciate a little more knowledge because this is my property abutting, and I have a whole lot more property than theirs. I want to know what I can do with mine if it's acceptable for this to happen. Consider me on board with another 100, 150 of these. Or if it's negated, I'll go on with that and just build my couple single-family houses out there, one or the other. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Hi. My name is Marcy Shumway. I live at 547 School Street.
Can you say that again, sorry?
547.
No, your name?
My name is Marcy Shumway. We abut the property. Our whole yard is their driveway, and the back of our property is where their utility building is. So we are affected by it greatly. The noise from the traffic going in, the, if it, I have a lot of questions. We enjoy when it's, that it's seasonal because from April to, you know, October to April, it's very quiet back there. Right now, it's very quiet back there, and we're enjoying having some peace in our backyard. I know that's my choice that I live there, and I've lived there for 26 years, 27 years, but it's always been quiet in the winter, and we look forward to that because that's when the foliage between our yard and their parking lot disappears, and I'm worried about having it be not just a seasonal property. And, and if it is going to be not a seasonal property, my worries are, when I looked at the paperwork online, it said that golf carts were going to be used because they wanted it to be a green property. So does that mean that all the vehicles for those units are going to be parked in the parking lot? Or are they going to be able to have one at the unit and then use golf carts just to get around the property? My other concern is how it's going to be rented, like the last gentleman. Is it going to be weekly, monthly, for a whole season? And then again, if it is not just a campground hours or months from, you know, April to October, to me, that becomes a mobile home park too. It's a mini, like mini homes are the big thing right now, so it becomes a mini mobile home park. And then the restaurant. How, what will the hours be? It's 1,700 square feet. That's a pretty big restaurant. And is it only for the people at the campground during the time that the campground is open? Or the rentals are open? Or is it going to be open to the public and then more traffic going in and out past my yard? Fences, you know, sometimes make good neighbors.
They always make good neighbors.
I'm trying to think about, and what is the building behind my house going to be used as? Is it still going to be used as storage, or is it going to be used for more recreational And then the operating hours right now, the operating hours were till 8:00 PM. Is it going to stay that way, or is it going to change? And then the water use as well, the noise from the pickleball court behind our house as well. I'd rather hear the kids playing at the daycare than people screaming playing pickleball in my backyard. All right, I think between what the other people said and what I said, I think those are my main concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else come forward, I'm going to close this public hearing. Next is preliminary plan, major subdivision, Goodrich Farm, R-40, Lot 4, Zone R-3, Durant and Diamond Hill Road, Altus Engineering.
For the record, American salary from Altus Engineering here on behalf of the applicant. There's nothing to report. Nothing has changed on this project at all. It's the same as it was since the beginning, so I guess we'll just let the public have at it if they're here to speak on it.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no one come up, I'll close this public hearing. Thank you. Next is preliminary plan and conditional use, major subdivision, Norman Court, R-44, Lot 20, Zone R-1, and R-2, Civil Consultants. I'm going to recuse myself.
My name is Neil Repose. I'm a civil consultant here on behalf of Norman Court LLC. This plan is not having substantial changes since the previous presentation beyond some material changes in the piping for the water that was reviewed and requested by Main Water Company. Take input from the public.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Ellis. I live at 98 Old Pine Hill Road. I do abut Lot 1 of this property, and I've prepared some, I spoke last time, but I've prepared more detail, and I've handed out some present, some documents, and I will send those to Terry right after the meeting. So I have five, I have many concerns, but I'll go through five of them tonight. The first one is that it's, we know that the limitation in R-1 and R-2 is to 35 feet, but the town also requires new buildings blend in with the surrounding areas with existing buildings nearby per the land use ordinance, Article 9.8, which says relationship of proposed buildings to the environment. Proposed structures shall be related harmoniously to the terrain and to the existing buildings in the vicinity which have a visual relationship with the proposed buildings. Special attention shall be paid to the bulk, location, and height of buildings and such natural features as slope, soil type, and drainage ways. So this is off, just on the east side of Old Pine Hill North, and it's one of the side, small side streets. All of these side streets have single resident, single-family houses, and yet they're proposing three-story apartment buildings. There are no multifamily apartment buildings on any of these quiet, dead-end streets. There is, this, it just doesn't seem to meet with these performance standards. I've also driven extensively through Zone 2, which is where this is, Zone R-2, and found no three-story buildings. The only three-story apartment buildings I've found are in Zone R-1 or the Village Overlay District, where this type of dense development seems appropriate and in line with Furtwick's comprehensive plan. The developer has indeed built a three-story apartment building at 28 Old Pine Hill Road South. However, that's in Zone R-1, and it's built into a hill and is only two stories above grade. Allowing three-story apartment buildings to be built on Norman Court Zone, Court, Norman Court in Zone R-2 will set a precedent that will likely lead to the urbanization of what is supposed to be a transition zone from urban to rural, not supposed to be an urban zone. Finally, I am concerned the developer has subdivided this large lot he bought, given half to his sister, and he's also expressed interest in buying another property on Norman Court. And I'm concerned that in the future, he will try to build additional multifamily apartment buildings on Norman Court if this is allowed. I understand that the way this works is that, that you can ask for conditions, that the planning board can put conditions on the permit. So I would, each of these things, I will leave you with requested condition. The development either be limited to two-story, single-family homes to blend in with the neighborhood, or two-story multifamily buildings to be consistent with other buildings in Zone R-2. Also, I would like to hear the developers not planning to develop additional properties on Norman Court. I don't think that could be a restriction. My second species, my second concern is that the species of special concern have not been accounted for. The application that was presented in the 921 packet, there are two letters from the earlier version from Navina Court, but they say that from the letter, from Marine Department, Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, and also from Maine Natural Area Programs. And the application states that these letters say there's no, no, no species of concern or habitats on the property. But both letters, which I've included here, I'm not going to quote them, the letters say there are no documented habitats or species of concern. Both letters specifically recommend surveys for spice bush. Spice bush is the host plant of the spice bush swallowtail butterfly, which is a species of concern in Maine. And on September 27th, a neighbor and I walked through the proposed development, and we located spice bush on Lot 1, on Lot 2, within and downhill from the proposed development. So a requested condition is that in fact, these, that surveys are done by state biologists for species of concern. And after that, developer has to be required to follow any resulting state recommendations to protect these species or habitats of concern. My third point is invasive, about invasive species, invasive plants that are likely to be spread. I think we'll hear another letter from somebody else, but there are so much Japanese knot weed on Norman Court. I have provided a photo of that, photos of that in this document. It's on the right by Coffin Brook. The trucks are going back and forth past there. You can see where they're knocking the pieces off, and that's exactly how knotweed spreads by just, all you need is a little piece of it to be moved around, and it's going to be dangerous to property owners, buyers, sellers, anyone who lives in the area, and also to the town of Furtwick if this is moved around. So I draw your attention to the photo on, on page five, I'm sorry, figure five, page 10. And actually going back to the, there is also a diagram, figure four, where I've indicated the approximate places of spice, spice bush. I forgot to mention that earlier, but this is all in the document for you since I know my time is limited here. The other very big, big concern that I have, well, the requested condition about the knot weed is that the developer should be required to seek and follow recommendations on how to eradicate it or prevent spreading it between the developer's properties as well as into the town and to abutting properties because it's really horrible stuff to try to eradicate. It can ruin your foundation. My fourth concern is that two of us, that, that, okay, my fourth concern is that lots one and two include documented wetlands and, and streams as well as land that is wet and uneven. The plans do indicate that they're planning to fill 1,272 square feet of wetland on lots one and two. An unknown amount of additional fill is certainly expected because the land is wet and uneven. And there's this, they're also going to be building the, the parking lot and the, over a stream, which they have planned to, they have a stormwater management plan that addresses it, are they going to put the stream, divert it, put it into a contained drain, and move it over towards another wetland? But there's no consideration of our wetland, which belongs to abutters, the Kinlaw's and I, and Ellis here. This wetland, may I point this out? The wetland is visible, our wetland is visible on the C2. It's right under here. It's a designated wetland. In fact, it's a restricted buffer area that I have deeded restrictions that I have to protect this, and it's Maine DEP makes sure that I keep a restricted buffer area around this. And we're directly downhill from Lot 1 and from Lot 2. There's no consideration given to this wetland, only to this one. So the, this wetland has in it, I'm a trained biologist, I've lived here for 18 years. There are breeding grounds for spring frog, for frogs, like spring peepers, wood frogs, gray frogs. It's got hundreds of gray, hundreds of blue irises and other plants growing on it. I do provide pictures of those, and many birds nest near, nearby and use as a watering pole. So I'm deeply worried that all the filling of the wetland here, the filling that I've expected elsewhere, the diversion of the stream is going to dry up this wetland that provides valuable habitat and enjoyment for neighbors. And abutters, they should not be allowed to affect that. So requested condition there is that the developer should be required to have Maine DEP study how, how the filling of the wetland, the planned filling of the wetland, the anticipated fill, and the diversion of the stream, how is that going to affect the Ellis and Kinlaw wetland? If that study predicts detrimental effects, then plans have to be adjusted to avoid these effects. Also, they're bound to be, I mean, they're clear cutting, there's going to be lots of grass. Herbicides and pesticides must not be allowed because our wetlands are downhill from there. And finally, the, my fifth point is I'm concerned about damage to mature trees. There are some wonderful, wonderful, big old trees that are along the property line, along this, along the stone wall here, along the sides of the lot, along the sides as well. We have documented some of these trees are over 100 years old, and there's a stand of white birches near the back. So a wooded buffer should be allowed to protect these trees along the back. These will also provide, provides a partial screen, which has been requested by neighbors, and I'm sure it's something that would be good for the property. But you can't cut these trees down, you can't damage them, they're irreplaceable. Any newly planted trees, like put in a couple of pine trees or whatever, it's going to take decades to recover, recover those. So the requested condition here is before any clearing of trees begins, clearly mark the trees that must be protected in case, so there's no, no miscommunication between the tree cutters and the developer, and leave a wooded buffer on the sides and the backs of the lots to ensure that these mature trees are protected and not killed by the heavy equipment or through excessive cuttings to root systems. I do thank you for the opportunity to present these concerns, and, and, and also, I guess if you, when you do put conditions on it, are, I'm wondering if we will be informed what conditions there are, and will we be kept up to date? Thank you.
My name's Ed Kinlaw. I am one of the abutters.
Sorry, what was your name again?
Ed Kinlaw.
Ed Kinlaw, thank you.
One of the abutters directly behind this proposed development. Not going to go over every single point that Sarah has already presented here, but also share all of her concerns with this development. One of the things that I will reiterate again is that it, the wetland concerns, you know, how that's going to affect. how that's going to affect, uh, any of the wildlife in the area, as well as asking for a condition to leave a screen along the back of the property as well. Some form of foliage or whatever, uh, to help with that. The other thing that I would probably ask, and this would be aimed at the folks that live on Norman Court, that one of the things that we have experienced already on Halflinger Lane is that there be some type of, uh, traffic control devices put in on Norman Court during the construction, as during the current project that's going on on Halflinger, uh, a lot of the subcontractors and contractors seem to think that our road is a drag strip. And they like to treat it as such. So, it's a safety concern, because we have kids, people that walk in the street. So, some thought needs to be given to that as well. And then finally, one of the other concerns that we have is more in the general community sense of this, is what is the strain of this going to put on already existing strained, uh, things in the community, like the schools, police department, uh, fire department, sewer, water? What's the additional, uh, cost that this is going to drive to that? We have kids in the school, uh, and again, from talking to folks within the police department, and also, uh, with the school system itself, um, they're already bursting at the seams. So, with the amount of folks that are in here. So we have concerns with the amount of folks that will be brought into the area because of this already taxing, the taxed system. That's it. Thank you.
My name is Bobby Johnson. I live on, uh, Norman Court. I am an abutter also. But, uh, it's not in my backyard. It's going to be in my front yard. I only see positives for myself and what goes on there. And I like to see some, uh, new places for sale and for rent. You know, we're a bedroom community. We don't have any industry, so that is our industry, bedrooms. Thank you.
Um, I do have a comment, uh, that I had to read into the record before you guys do any rebuttals or anything. Would you like me to do that now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, this was emailed in. It was asked to be read into the public comments section, considerations on the proposed development on Norman Court. As someone who has lived on Old, and this is from, uh, oh, I'm going to slaughter that name. Tinubial, okay. So it is exactly how I thought. Tinubial Sampson, 112 Old Pine Hill Road. As someone who has lived on Old Pine Hill Road for many years, I have some concerns about an apartment building being built in the R2 zoning of Norman Court. One, the proposed site is quite wet with an unnamed stream going through the middle of the building area. Of course, modern engineering can redirect and contain the water, but to what environmental cost? I suspect this area has a year-round seep due to the established flora, mosses, alders, alders, melbury, and winterberry, some of the plants found in this area. She did include the fancy names, but I'm not going to kill myself with those tonight. Thank you. Um, and aster that appears to be swamp aster is growing in the area designated to become the widened two-laned road. These plants range from FACW, a faculative wetland, to OBL, obligate. I don't think the current mapping of the wetland is accurate, and that it should be surveyed by MDEP to determine the actual square footage area of wetlands that will be impacted. Wetland is defined as land areas with soil that is saturated with water, either permanently or seasonally. A surprising amount of linderab benzoine, spice bush seedlings, and young trees are scattered through both Plot 1 and Plot 2. Spice bush is a plant of special concern at S3 in Maine, with about 14 to 15 native populations in the entire state, most are New York County. Spice bush is the only food source for the spice bush swallowtail and endangered butterfly in Maine. This butterfly is definitely in the vicinity, as I have populations of the caterpillars on the spice bush growing in my property, a couple houses down. I'm roughly 1,000 feet from the spice bush that are on Plot 1 and Plot 2, likely less as the butterfly flies. The invasive species on Norman Court are of concern. Autumn olive and Japanese knotweed are both prevalent. These are both on the Maine prohibited plant list. The do not sell list is also sometimes referred to as prohibited plant list or the banned plant list. Is legal to import, export, buy, sell, or intentionally propagate for sale the species listed on the do not sell plant list. I've not seen anywhere in the proposal a plan for mitigating or removing these plants or a discussion on how their spread will be prevented. Invasive plants are readily transferred by construction vehicles, particularly the Japanese knotweed, that can resprout from pieces as small as an inch. What are the mitigation plans by the construction company? And what will be the effect of the additional volume of cars on Old Pine Hill Road and Sullivan Street? Old Pine Hill Road is a street that cars routinely go higher than the speed limit, pass on the double yellow line, tailgate, and generally display aggressive driving behavior. It's used as a shortcut by many people to avoid downtown. It's also a road that is narrow with some deep ditches on parts of it. There are many dog walkers, joggers, and children on bikes. The recent apartment building has added to the children in the area. A couple of years ago, a children playing sign was installed, but the speed limit was not reduced on the road. Speed reduction to 25 miles per hour plus a speed hump or stop sign near the library should be considered for the road. With Norman Court being nearly across the street from Sullivan Street, the traffic would likely be increased significantly on Sullivan also. I'm unsure why the speed limit wasn't reduced to 25 miles per hour when Old Pine Hill Road became part of the urban district several years ago. The house density has increased significantly in the past 12 years. As my neighbor across the street, who sold his house this summer, said to me, "My house used to be the second house on the left from School Street, now it's the 25th house." That's the difference a decade makes. It seems that being part of downtown, we should have a downtown speed limit. Where else in the downtown is the speed limit 35 miles per hour? Thank you for your time.
All right, seeing no one else coming up, I will close this public hearing. Thank you. Um, next is the first public comment. This is for any non-agenda issues. Okay, I'll close that. Uh, next is approval of minutes, uh, for September 7th and 21st. So, we don't have a quorum for either of those, so we're going to have to move those Nope. All right, next is old business, conditional use, Beaver Dam Campground, 551 School Street, R53, Lot 13A, Welsh Engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to address the comments that were brought up.
Please, thank you.
Mr. Van Dusen had several comments. One is, um, his concern about it becoming a mobile home park. I think Irish can talk to this as well, but mobile home parks are not allowed in that district. It can't be done. This is a campground. It's a campground now, and it's going to remain a campground. That's the plan. That is the master plan. What you see here is the master plan. Um, I don't think it's any different than, than that. Units will be rented on a daily and a weekly basis. There's no plan to have people live here year-round, but as, I guess that was the insinuation, but that, that's not the plan. This is a campground, and will be rented as such. Uh, Mr. Kathios had several comments, um, talked about the buffer quite a bit. There presently is, um, some roads, you know, there's a little pointer here. There presently are some units, that the buffer runs right on the, towards the backside of those units over there, the 250-foot buffer. So the vernal pool is right there, and if you measure out 250 feet, we've pulled all of those units outside of that 250-foot buffer. We're improving the situation. The environmental study that you'll see recommends planting those areas within the 250, and we will do that. We will plant the, there's some, there's a road and a couple of units that are within that space. So we're pulling those back and making that situation better. He indicated there was 2,000 feet of sewer that goes through the buffer. There's, there's nothing in the buffer. I don't, I don't know, there is sewer being built out here, absolutely, on the site, but it's not within the buffer area. So, um, the restaurant will have 90 seats in it. That's what, that will have. That was one of the questions. The septic system will be and is being designed and permitted and approved through the DHHS, the Department of Health and Human Services, as an engineered system. It will have a tertiary treatment system with it as well. And what that does is it treats the effluent before it's discharged into the leach bed. It brings a higher level of treatment than a normal septic system would do. And those, that, that system will be, will be located right there. It's going to serve the, it's going to serve the site, and it's going to serve everything here. It's going to serve all the campground, all the campers and the restaurant and the office There, we have developed an erosion control plan, and that's part of that package that I said that we have submitted, so you will see that in there. Um, we have an erosion control plan for all of the construction out here, and you will, you'll see that. Um, the units are campers, and they're going to be on wheels. There's a definition of a camper, and that's what they're going to be. The, again, talked about the mobile home park in Section 8. This is a, it's going to be a campground, and that's, that's what it's going to be. Ms. Shumway had a couple of comments. Asked where the parking will be. So, what we have done here is we do have the parking lot out front. And the way we anticipate this working is that all of the units will be serviced by golf carts. I talked about it, this at the last meeting, there's an area right here, we have overflow parking, and we've accounted for 30 spaces right there. I don't think they're going to be necessary, but, but the code requires it, or the ordinance requires it. So, we have enough space right here to do 30 parking spaces. So primarily, this area is going to be used, if there is some reason for that, this area will be the overflow section for parking.
Mr. Welsh, may I interrupt for a moment?
Yeah.
Um, if I understood her, Mrs. Shumway's concern correctly, it's the fact that there's going to be golf carts used in the park, but the parking is also in the park. So how do you anticipate the cars getting from, into the overflow parking and out? And how are you going to prevent those cars from going to the, to the, to the individual lots, I think is her concern?
Yeah, I mean, the, the staff's going to have to direct these people to park here, I think, when we have that situation. There is a, there is a road, I'm going to call it a road, there's a, there's an emergency access road, if you will, that runs down through here. So that will be a, a road that can support traffic and, and park the cars. They're all going to be concentrated right here, right beyond, right beyond the building.
Okay. I think, I think your other statement just answered her, the, what I understood to be her concern. Just wanted to make sure you cleared it up.
Sure. Um, I think I said before rentals will be probably on a daily or weekly basis here. That was one of the other questions. We are, and again, I'll make this point, we're actually reducing the number of units here. We're reducing it by 20 units overall than what exists there today. So, there's actually going to be a reduction of use on this site. We're reducing the impervious by over 2 acres on this site. We're pulling out of the 250-foot buffer. We're creating a septic system that is adequate for this site, and will treat effluent properly. All of those things to me seem like a positive. There was one thing about pickleball, and you'll, you'll see this in the, in the information that you get, we are putting up a fence, a 10-foot fence, and putting plantings along that side, on the, on the abutter side of the property. And that is in the, in the new submission that we, that we put forward, so.
There was a question about the hours of the restaurant?
I don't know those hours. I'm going to have to talk to, I'll, I'll bring that answer to you next time. I just, I don't know what, what their intention is. Primarily, it's going to be for use of the-
Public, correct?
Not of the people in the campground, I believe.
Yes.
It's going to be open to the public.
Is it open to the public?
Yes, but, but I don't think it'll be on, I think primarily, it's going to be people in the, in the campground that are using it.
So I got a couple of questions. I'm sorry if it's in here and I missed it.
Sure.
Um, my question is about, you know, I heard somebody talk about, you know, it becoming a glorified trailer park, and that was one of my concerns initially as well. So, um, my question is, um, these are going to be seasonal, or these are going to be year-round?
They'd like to possibly do them year-round. It's going to see what the market, yeah, see what the market-
And what about, um, so these are going to be all short-term rentals?
Yeah.
And, uh, you're going to, are you renting sites? Or are you actually putting the park models in and renting those?
The park models, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and renting those.
But it's all short-term rentals? It's no-
Right.
They're going to be signing two-year leases, one-year leases with people living there?
I don't believe so. I think they're short-term, but I can, I'll get that clarified for you. I'm, I suppose somebody could rent it for the season, if they wanted.
Well, the season is one thing, a year is another thing.
Right.
You know, because for me, you know, it's, it's not unreasonable for somebody to rent a camper for the season.
Right.
I know many people that do that.
Right.
Um, but when you start signing a one-year lease, then I think that's where it, you're dancing on that edge of-
Yeah, understood.
Does it become a glorified trailer park?
Understood.
So I, I think for me, and I don't know if I can require this or not, but I, I would like to see some language in there to specifically spell that out, that this is not going to-
Yeah.
Turn into long-term.
That's reasonable, yeah.
And then the other, uh, so you can answer about the seasonal. So the pickleball court, because I know we have someone here who lives right near there. One of the concerns I have with the, you say that you're going to put a fence and plantings, is that, um, you know, I guess what standard, I would ask this to Irish and maybe Hannah, what standard can we hold them to, to ensure that the noise is not disturbing surrounding neighbors?
Well, the town does have a noise ordinance, so they would, even if it's pickleball, which is an approved thing on the site plan, they still have to conform to the noise performance standards, which means 15 minutes continuous heard outside of the property at certain, there's all kinds of verbiage, and I don't have it in front of me, but they, they'll be held to that with the pickleball, just as well as-
So there is recourse for-
Absolutely.
An abutter or neighbor-
Yeah.
If, if it becomes a nuisance.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely is. And trust me, I know I will get the calls if there is an issue. And Bill knows that his clients will get the calls from me if there is an issue, so.
I think that, I think those are my, uh, my big issues. Seasonal, you know, seasonal language about the, you know, no more than like a seasonal rental.
Yeah, like three months, three, four months.
Well, even if the season is April to October, you know, whatever the season is, I think that is, you know, a seasonal lease, non, you know, non-consecutive-
Six months, yeah. Some sort of time limit on that.
I think a time limit is probably more important than just saying seasonal, because you could have a snowmobiling season.
Well, I mean, specifically seasonal.
So, you know, four months less or less, or three months or less, or something to that effect.
Right. I, I think that, you know, a campground would probably be a, you know, two six-month leases potential, right? If you might have the people that want to come up and snowmobile and-
Right.
Hunt or whatever, you know, whatever you do in the wintertime here.
I don't think that would be a problem. I'll certainly talk to the, to the owners about that, but that's, seems pretty reasonable to make.
Could even be a three-month.
And it seems to take away that idea that people are going to stay there.
Honestly, that was my big concern as well.
Yeah, understood.
So I, I think that that's a happy-
Mr.-
Yeah, we need some kind of language, because I've seen campgrounds in other areas become what we don't want this to become.
If I, if I may, if it appeases the, the board and the abutters any, we do, in our land use ordinance, actually have the definition of campground, just the wrong distance for whether the glasses should be on or off. And the definition for campground actually states an area or tract of land to accommodate two or more parties in temporary living quarters, including but not limited to tents, recreational vehicles, or other shelters. They would not be allowed to sign a one-year lease that is not a temporary living arrangement, that is a permanent living arrangement. So they can only rent daily, weekly, monthly, seasonally, but they cannot do annual, because that takes it out of the temporary housing, and then it becomes a violation, and I have to go in there and-
Yeah, I, I think that that's pretty vague, and I'd like to see something more specific in the-
I'd like to see the verbiage a little stricter, too. I'd like to see the verbiage a little stricter, too, in, not only in that, but in the, in the ordinance would be nice if it was...
I think my big thing would be, you know, I'm okay with seasonal, if it's a six-month, is considered the summer season, the winter season, but non-consecutive leases or something would, would probably satisfy my...
Okay.
And I was looking to see if there was anything in the ordinance itself that specified that or not, that might be something that they, because I don't see anything in there.
Yeah, I got a question. It was brought up. I think we talked about this the first time this was proposed to us. These units will not be placed on a slab, is that correct?
They're gonna be on tires, to be, to be campers.
Cause there's no concrete slab under the...
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. And so just, you said that...
I'm gonna say that again, because I do think I've heard that twice, that there is a slab and that there isn't a slab.
There is no slab.
You just say there will be no...
No slab. The units will have their tires still on and setting on the ground.
Gravel.
Gravel.
Gravel ground.
That was brought up the first time this was presented.
Another concern was just screening near the road with one of the abutters, the entrance. It seemed like she was saying her house is right there, yeah, right there.
Yeah, I mean, we could look at that and look at adding some, some plantings in there.
Okay.
I think, I don't, just can't quite remember what that looks like.
Irish?
Again, it's covered in the land use ordinance. Campsite shall be laid out and screened in such a manner that none are within view from public roads, navigable rivers, existing residences, or approved subdivision lots. Any combination of evergreen planting, landscaped earth and barms, or solid fencing may be used to achieve screening standard when campsites would otherwise be visible from the locations described above. So again, covered in the land use ordinance, they have to comply.
Well, I think that, I think that's two different subjects.
It specifies residences, so...
I think that's two different subjects, because I think that when you're talking about screening where the pickleball courts are, that would be screening also the campground from the abutters, and I think what you just asked was the drive, the entrance.
Yeah, right near the entrance, it seemed like, right next to the house.
And I don't know if that's really a reasonable request, but I think that, I just wanna clarify the difference between what she just read and what...
That's for the campground, but this is... Right, and I get that...
In the wintertime, when the leaves are down.
Yeah, okay, so hold on, the, the public comment is done. So right now, it's just us talking and discussing. The issue being the screening, the, there, Hannah, you could probably answer this a little bit better. They could add trees to that to screen it as a buffer. It's not like we're asking for a fence. I mean, this place already is existing, so it's not like this is a new subdivision where new things like screening is needed, but this would be kinda like that happy medium mix of just adding a couple of trees type of thing.
Yes. We're, we're talking about the, the entrance.
Yeah, up into the parking lot, cause it looks like it's already wooded right there, just to kinda add to it.
Yeah.
I, I wonder if the definition of what part of the campground is visible or not visible, are we talking all the way to Route Nine, where you can see the road, or only where the sites are? So if the concern is that the parking lot can be seen, is that part of the campground that needs to be screened so that it can't be seen, or more along the lines of the buildings and the campsites?
So as it is right now, that this place has already been here before the land use ordinance, even if the parking lot shouldn't have to be screened. The issue would be the mobile units. I mean, if you drive down School Street right now, you're just gonna basically see, you'd have to go slow to see the buildings, but you can drive by and see the parking lot.
I, I think that my opinion is that the, the more important thing is to screen the piece. The parking lot, I, I agree with you, I don't think is a required thing to screen that parking lot, but I think that all of the buildings, and particularly, I hate to keep going back to with that pickleball court, I think that I'm really concerned about the noise from that pickleball court and, you know, seeing, seeing some evergreen trees there that...
Just grab a plan, would I have one?
Evergreen.
Sure, yeah, that'd be great.
Evergreen trees, shrubs and bushes are a very good sound dampening thing. Our performance standards for campgrounds and tending grounds only specifies campsites laid out within need of screening. And there is a definition for the recreational vehicles that the board may wanna be aware of when they're asking these questions. A vehicle or vehicular attachment designed to be towed for temporary sleeping or living quarters for one or more persons, which is not a dwelling, and which may include a pickup camper, travel trailer, tent trailer, camp trailer, motorhome. In order to be considered as a vehicle, not as a structure, it must remain with its tires on the ground, must be roadworthy, i.e. possess current registration sticker from any state division of motor vehicles. So the park models have to be kept up, maintained, and kept on their wheels, and they are specifically, they're specified as not for living. So if anybody were to try and break that regulation, then it would be code violation of our ordinance, and I'd be able to intervene.
Okay.
But it, it does not specify anything in here about, A, a definition of temporary, and B, anything about any sort of parking screening for campgrounds, just about campsites themselves.
So...
If I could?
Nope.
Nope.
Please read these.
No, no, no.
Okay, contradicts what you say.
Public comment is over. You can talk to me after if you need to.
So the, the, the black dots that are here are the survey-located trees, that we, we located those along the ways. These darker green ones here would be the screening. So pickleball court, ten-foot-high fence, and then this is a section of it. So pickleball court, ten-foot-high fence, and evergreen plantings behind that. I suspect there'll be arborvitaries or white pines that'll go in behind that.
Do you know if they intend that to just be a solid fence, or if they intend on using some of that dense fiber pack stuff that noise reduces?
The idea was just a solid fence.
Just a solid fence, okay.
Solid fence, probably.
Just curious.
Yep.
Did you do a sightline for the neighbors?
Yeah.
When you determine the screening? Because I think that, I think that there's two things going on here. One is a screening for the sound from the pickleball court.
Yep.
And the other one is to make sure that there's screening from the campground to the abutters. And I think that, you know, in, in my, my experience, you know, I've seen sightline views where, you know, they, they map out like the neighbor's house, and they say, what can the neighbor see? And they make sure that that screening covers what the neighbor can see from their property.
Yeah, there is, I think the neighbors that see this are on this, on this side, right? And there is, these are, these dark...
So that's gonna be a continuous screening?
Singles, are, those actually exist, that, that, those trees all exist there. So it's actually a pretty good screen buffer that's there.
Okay.
And where we're adding in where those pickleball courts are right there is where that, that evergreen hedge will be, will be set in behind that as well.
Because I, I think from, I think my challenge, and I think some of my board members probably share the challenge, is that, you know, this is an existing campground, it has been here for a long time, but when you do a major overhaul like this, I think that, you know, it's not unreasonable for us to hear the public and say, you know, what do we want? What do we want to happen? Like it's, like it's new. I think that you've, with this, with the sound screening and the screening of the trees, I, I think that we're, you know, I think that's where we, where we would like it to be.
Yep.
I do, you know, I did make my point clear that, you know, if this pickleball court becomes a nuisance, I want, you know, the co-empowerment office to be able to do something. Cause I know I would not like to have my backyard.
Again, if guests are right, they've gotta, just to keep their guests happy, they're gonna, they're gonna have to be cognizant of it.
Yeah, I mean, how the noise ordinance is set up is it has to be fifteen minutes of continuous sound. So it'd be very difficult to say that they're, they're making that much sound.
Yep.
It's not like it, if you hit a ball, this is a pause, you hit a ball, that's not consecutive.
Right.
So I think the screening is well adequate to what the ordinance says. I think you guys have gone above and beyond in issuing that concern as a ordinance issue and as a good neighbor. That was pretty much it. Like you said earlier, the erosion and sediment control, you have more information on that.
There's a whole plan in that package, so you're gonna see this, you're gonna see that, that other stuff, you're gonna see the parking, you're gonna see the snow storage. That was the, the items.
So just to maybe sum up the, some of the questions about the restaurant, you're looking at ninety seats.
Yes.
You're not sure the hours just yet, whether it's gonna be breakfast, lunch, dinner, or one, or two, or three of those?
I, I think it's all three of those, cause it'll, it'll service the campground.
So they'll be open all day?
Right.
You're, you're, alright, so maybe we can get that clarified?
Yep.
And it is open to the public?
Yes.
And parking has been considered for the restaurant as well as the campground?
Yes.
I just wanted to get those couple of things clarified. Thank you.
Yeah, you'll see that in the package.
Yep.
And just, just, I, I know the answer to this, but I'd just like to get it spoken. I know that some abutters raised concerns about the, the septic design and the leach field, but I'm confident that you have an engineered plan that's adequate for the spaces that we're gonna have in the, the restaurant and the ninety-seat restaurant.
Yep, yep. As I said, it, there's a whole nother process we have to go through with the state to even permit that. We've had a preliminary meeting with them, talked through the, the idea, the concept, and showed them a conceptual plan, and they're, they're in favor of it, and we're actually glad to see that it was being improved from what, what is there today.
Any other questions, concerns? You guys all set?
I have the noise ordinance in front of me, if you...
Okay, if you had, let's, let's read it out.
So the maximum permissible sound pressure level of any continuous, regular, or frequent source of sound produced by any activity shall be limited by the time period in land use district listed below. Sound levels shall be measured at least four feet above ground at the property boundary. So we're talking, you know, reasonable height, property boundary. For residential districts between seven AM and ten PM on a decibel scale of sixty, and from ten PM to seven AM, fifty. The level specified may be exceeded by ten decibels for a single fifteen-minute period per day. Noise shall be measured by a meter set on the A-weighted response scale, slow response. So it evenly lays out how we have to test it. No person shall engage in activities on a site abutting at any residential use between the hours of ten PM and seven AM, which exceed those limits established for residential districts. Otherwise, following activities shall be exempt from those regulations. So construction and maintenance activities conducted between seven and ten. Sounds emanating from safety signals, warning devices, emergency pressure relief valves, and other emergency activities are always an exception, and sounds emanating from traffic on public transportation facilities. So it's all laid out, not only what they're allowed to do, when they're allowed to do it, but how we have to test for it if there's complaints. So, good to go.
Thank you.
I have a question. Are these courts lighted?
Um, right now, we haven't shown any lights on them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And so I'm assuming they'll close the courts, they'll have certain hours in the courts?
Yeah, again, I...
Cause I'd like to see some kind of hours if you have them.
All right, I'll, I'll ask the clients about that.
Don't look at me, I'm a lot of things, Mike.
Okay. Just making sure.
No, I've looked up everything I thought that the board might need to consider to make their comments to Mr. Walsh or respond to the public.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you could give me the answers on that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along. Preliminary plan, major subdivision, Goodrich Farm, R forty, Lot Four, Durn, and Diamond Hill Road, Altus Engineering.
Good evening again. For the record, once again, Eric Sowry, back from Altus Engineering on behalf of the applicant. As I indicated before, nothing's changed, so I guess it's at the board's plunger.
You don't have any pickleball courts, do you?
No pickleball courts. I tried, I tried, but they didn't really want it, you know?
Yeah.
All right, yeah, there's no public, uh, comment at the public hearing. All waivers have already been granted. Is there any issues, Hannah or Irish? Do you have any issues?
No, this one's pretty straightforward.
Yes. The motion we approved, they're putting right on.
We find it complete.
They'll find it complete.
Yes.
I think we've already done that.
I probably did.
Yeah, we're just approving the preliminary plan.
Yeah.
Okay, approving the preliminary plan, okay.
It's fine.
All right, I'll second. Further discussion? All in favor? Okay. And then, do we do the final as well? No, not yet.
Let me do the final. Is it possible? The plan's not gonna change.
The ordinance allows it? Please hold. Please, please hold. Next to a little brain cell will be with you in a moment.
The ordinance may not allow for them on the same day, but let me check. Since there's nothing that the board wants changed.
Right, right, that's... It's, it's really straight, that straightforward.
Yeah, it's straightforward, yeah.
Finally, an easy one.
Wish they were all this easy.
Yeah.
But then they wouldn't need us.
That's good.
That's good, too. No.
Well, then you gotta come back anyway.
We can just drop it off.
They just dropped it off?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion. Was it, um...
To approve?
To approve the final plan?
Yeah.
Pending findings of facts, right? Okay.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, further discussion?
I, I just wanted to ask that we're not jumping the gun again on approving things without having everything in front of us. I mean, I know that we need to have documents presented ahead of time so that we can review them before a meeting. We need to have plans in front of us that need to be looked at and signed when the vote is made. We don't have that, he's not ready for that tonight.
He has it.
He doesn't have it.
Well, he doesn't have the plans, but he's already...
We don't always have the sign, we don't always have the one for them to sign, they, they typically don't bring them that night.
For final approval?
For final approval. They typically don't bring the copy that is stamped for the board to sign.
Yeah, they don't bring the, the final plan that's approved, because we might require changes tonight.
If there are any conditions of approval that the board puts on it, they would have to add those to sign it.
So if we don't make any changes, then they just bring that plan, then they get it with their signature.
Yep, it's the same plan that they brought forward at the beginning.
Okay. Clear it up. Learn it as I go.
So you were, you were actually provided with that information, so that literally there's been no changes, so your original packet?
The plan looks great, I have nothing wrong with the plan.
I was gonna say, you did receive your packet.
Yeah, no, no, it has nothing to do with the project itself, I just wanted to make, procedurally, that I understood how it works.
If there's any question about any... If there's any question about anything to change, totally right, but since the board has no concerns.
Gotcha. Alright. I retract my discussion.
And we double, and we double-checked on the ordinance, both of us right here, so.
Yeah, there's nothing that precludes that.
Alright, all in favor?
Okay, thank you. Thanks, guys. Have a good evening.
Alright, moving along. Preliminary plan and conditional use, Malloy Brook, major subdivision, School Street and Heritage Drive, R49, Lot 3, Atar Engineering.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Irish.
We're both looking away at the moment. Was it unanimous?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
We're trying to take good notes so we don't have to watch the whole video, because you guys only have to live it for three and a half hours, we have to live it for seven. So we're trying to make good notes here.
We try and not have three and a half hour meetings.
I know, but just in case, unless it might make you the wrong time on a video.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chair. Hopefully you have the mic tall enough for me. For the record, Mike Sudak, Atar Engineering, here on behalf of SW Solar Incorporated. I have Kevin Hill, my client, here with me in the audience tonight. Thank you for having us. I'm gonna guess a brief, brief overview is in order. This is our first preliminary hearing, or preliminary application review, so please, as the board, I can quickly go over.
Yes, please.
Okay. So this should look exactly the same from our sketch review back in July. We had our site walk in the middle of August. What you're looking at here is the overall parcel, 67 acres, but the majority of what we're affecting, and I'm gonna use my pointer here, is 12 acres up front, if you will, is a dual frontage lot, School Street here in the bottom right, and Heritage Drive over top of it. And back in 2021, the planning board approved a solar farm in the rear of the property, about 11 acres for that occupied area. We're staying well away from that, but just need to show the overall parcel as it is. Okay, so what we're taking a look at here is a seven-lot conventional subdivision, so not a cluster development. Conventional lots, so 60,000 square foot upland area minimum. All frontage lots, six of them we're proposing off of Heritage Drive, the seventh we're proposing off of School Street. All of the existing conditions from sketch review have carried forward, our high-intensity soil survey, our vernal pool that has been confirmed to be significant. This dark hatch up here in the top, which is going to limit the building envelopes. The developed area within these first three lots, we're effectively going to de-restrict their backyards, just to make sure we're not impacting that critical terrestrial setback. Rest of the property below those three lots is all open farmland, as you remember from the site walk. Private onsite utilities for both, individual wells, individual septic systems. We have a blanket of test pits. Everything should be in compliance there. Let's see. I think that concludes my summary. There's some comments from Hannah's memo that I'd be happy to go through, but I can feel any questions if the board has any first. Okay.
When do you want me to?
If you want, you can say it first, and then he can.
I was gonna go to you first anyway, so.
Okay, well, before, before the board gets too far, this has, there has been a lot, as you guys know, you've been receiving a lot of legal stuff, so I want to, wanted to go to the town attorney to see where we were at here. So after some back and forth with the town attorney, he said the board has... Okay, so what I, what I was asking him is basically, are you guys supposed to be reviewing the legal stuff that we supply you? Because we do give you everything that we receive. If that's something you're supposed to take into consideration, or if you're just supposed to consider the statement from DEP. And he said that the board has to review this, this application strictly for our zoning ordinances to see if it complies, that because DEP has weighed in, and even apparently had they ultimately decided not to, that the board has to determine it through the land use and the parties, well, the two parties involved, will have to determine after any approval, if an approval is in fact ultimately given to this project, they'll have to do their legal things outside. So basically, you guys can add, you have the authority to add a condition of approval if you choose to approve the application that requires a DEP stormwater permit prior to the issuance of any building permits or certificates of occupancy. And the board must apply the standards in the town ordinances and does not apply the DEP regulations, although you can add those DEP regulations as a condition of approval. So when you guys are reviewing this, although you've received a lot of legal back and forths in there, you guys are still just reviewing it for the land use ordinance. Anything beyond that is for the parties in the courts. Okay?
Thank you, Irish.
That's, gotta make sure my board has the, the guidance from the attorneys that protect my board members.
No, as early as possible, we appreciate it, too. Okay, so that was the first of three items that I had to discuss. The other two are from Hannah's staff memo. I can go through those quickly. She caught two different concerns within your ordinance that I had either missed or didn't know applied for, for this one. The first of which is a provision, I'm gonna grab my pointer again, within your subdivision regulations. And I'm going to do my best to be brief with this, but please give me the hook if I'm going on for too long. So specifically regarding, it's within your traffic control section, for lots that abut, or have frontage along an existing or proposed arterial street, which in our case is School Street, we have to declare on the plan, and we have to declare in the deed that their direct vehicular access cannot come from the arterial street. And we have two such lots that apply. We have Lot 6 and Lot 7. It is not an issue for Lot 6 because that has dual frontage, and we're proposing to have its direct access come off Heritage. It is an issue for Lot 7, and I'm going to put a pin in that for a moment to switch into the second item that Hannah brought up, which was one of our waiver requests. We're requesting two, we were requesting two. One of them for plan scale, which we are still requesting. The other one was for relief from your land use ordinance dimensional requirements, specifically your minimum lot width. The requirement's 150 feet, and we had two instances, the rear of Lot 7 here that I'm highlighting, and the rear of Lot 6 that I'm highlighting. We are requesting relief of 10 feet for both, down 140 feet. Hannah informed me that for conventional subdivisions, you don't have the authority to grant that relief, just for clustered, clustered only. So, and if I can get a little bit off-script, I know Terry dropped off a supplemental packet in your, well, supplemental item in your packet. Basically, what we're up against is, I brought up Lot 6 and 7 two separate times with both of those issues, and really the only way that we can proceed forward is to remove Lot 7 from consideration. Its frontage is exclusively on an arterial, which its driveway can't come off of, and there really is no way to get 150 feet of minimum lot width without putting any of the other lots into a state of non-conformance. So I'm gonna flip a couple pages here. Again, this was just put in your packets this evening. I, I do apologize for that. I really tried to, to not have that happen, because I like you guys to be as prepared as I am. But just catching this in Hannah's staff memo when I was taking a look at it today, this, this really seemed like the only way for us to move forward this evening. So the yellow highlighted line there that you see, that is the lot lines of Lots 5 and 6, based on the application as it was submitted. So what you guys have had for the entire length of your review. Effectively, what I'm proposing is to extend this rear yard line of Lot 6, extend it further north by 10 feet, creating 150 feet, makes Lot 6 compliant. And then in order to keep Lot 5 compliant, the rear yard of that has to be pushed further back, just so I still have 60,000 square feet of upland. Make it, make it a conforming lot. Those two changes, and axing Lot 7. So that's what I have before you. I really think that's the, the only way that we can proceed forward. So if you have any questions to that, otherwise I would, I would consider this the, the iteration we'd like to, to proceed forward with. Thank you. And a few ladies have any comments as well?
No questions?
No, that's outside my comments.
Do you have anything, Irish?
I also have half sizes of the colors that I've applied here, just in case anyone else wants a closer look.
Yeah, could I get one of those?
Sure.
I don't have to.
The glasses are bothering me.
Yeah, I'm, I'm like, it don't matter, I'm blind, it's too far that way. Can I maybe have a moment to look? I don't, I don't think any, unless anything jumps out at me.
There's enough for the board members, too, if you'd like me to play middleman.
Do you guys want copies?
So the removal of Lot 7, that just adds more green space?
Yeah, so all of the, really, really all of the, the changes throughout the plan set that would be affected by this would just be, you're absolutely right, our open space calculation, instead of retaining about 44 and a three-quarters acres, we're up close to 46 now for retained open space. Obviously, the density calculation isn't affected because we're improving it. And, yeah, our, our total disturbed area goes down because we removed the considerations of Lot 7's footprint, so.
Okay.
We're gonna approve the preliminary plan on this. We have not approved it yet, or have we?
We are going for completeness tonight.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
I don't have any questions.
Forgot to have that at the, the tail end of my introduction, the request this evening's preliminary completeness, scheduling of the public hearing. We're still one meeting away from preliminary approval. Thank you, though.
So I would say the, the changes that have been presented tonight do not affect the completeness. They, I guess, make it more complete than it was when they first submitted, since they weren't able to satisfy those two.
Okay.
Yeah, the two things they weren't satisfied for. So this makes them more complete than they were when they first.
How does it make it more complete if we don't have the plan showing the six lots versus the seven lots?
Because when they first submitted, they had requested a waiver that isn't actually a waiver. So this fixes that, and then... Oh, just, just the, the lot access off of the other, off of School Street, again, just couldn't happen. So they could not be found complete without satisfying those two things.
Gotcha. And we can't grant them?
No, yes. The board cannot grant, yes. There would have to be a variance in order to get around the lot width, since it's a dimensional requirement. The board cannot grant waivers for dimensional requirements. You can only grant waivers for submission requirements. So there are other waivers request for a different plan scale, which is a specific submission requirement. You can waive that. But you cannot waive the lot size, the lot width setbacks, those kinds of things.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yep.
Question to either you or Hannah, is that, the waiver request that we are still requesting, is that something that the planning board can, can process this evening? When, when does that take place?
Yes.
That'll be tonight.
Okay.
So before they find it complete, whether that's today or next meeting, you have to choose to grant or not the waiver for the plan scale.
So let's talk about that waiver real quick. Subdivision ordinance 7.2(c) plan set scale.
I'd be happy to provide a brief summary.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, so for, I believe it's for subdivisions or for developments that are on, on less than 100 acres. Please correct me if I'm, if I'm mistaken there. The plan set scale maximum is supposed to be an inch equals 100 feet. The geometry of this parcel, you, you see it here even on an angle. It takes up most of the page. It's a 67-acre parcel, and it's a rather long parcel, so I had to, in order to adequately show the whole parcel and all of my lovely general notes, we had to go an inch equals 120 feet. So that's what we're requesting. And, and that is just for this, this page. Everything else is, I believe, an inch equals 60 or something, well within.
And you're okay with that, Hannah?
Okay.
I make a motion we approve the waiver.
I second you.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Okay, waiver granted?
Thank you.
Next is just for completeness.
Just as a, a comment, I'd like to say I appreciate the, the engineer taking the fact that they can't meet the ordinance into consideration and simply removing the lot as the right thing to do. It's probably not what your client wanted, but.
Yeah, I'm probably gonna get beaten up a little bit for that.
Yep. But, but it is the right thing to do as opposed to trying to squeeze something in that can't be squeezed in.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it'd be a heck of a lot of a headache that I think would involve re-engaging the DOT to, to move the gravel drive for the solar array, which I am not inclined to do, considering what that one took, so.
Yeah.
I, I do appreciate the kind words, though. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we find this application complete.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next is the public hearing. So this is the.
So.
Is the next meeting too early?
The ever, the ever-so-quiet Terry is finally speaking up.
I would say November 2nd.
November 2nd? Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, November 2nd it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, moving along. Preliminary plan and conditional use, major subdivision, Norman Court, R44, Lot 20, Civil Consultants.
I'll recuse myself.
Alright, thank you, Russ.
Hi, once again, Neil Repose, Civil Consultants, by behalf of Norman Court LLC. I, we're requesting preliminary approval for this project. We've gone through a couple of public hearings now. I know it'd be easiest, it sounds like, I mean, Sarah's document was very well put together, and I could just go through the, the conditions that she had listed and respond to those if it.
Okay.
Please, the board, that works.
Yeah.
The first requested condition would be that it would be either two single-family house or, yeah, either two single-family house to blend in with the neighborhood, or two-star multifamily buildings to be consistent with other buildings in Zone R2. As, as it's proposed, it is, it does meet the height requirements of the zone, and we did make an effort. There is an effort to, to pull the, the larger buildings back as far as we can without, without creating a lot of environmental impact. And that was also kind of a thought in keeping this a single-family house lot out front as a kind of a second layer of screening. So this would be a single-family house lot, and the development in the back here really isn't particularly visible to the public road. It's all on the private right-of-way, and as I said, we do, we're sure to keep the building heights down to the maximum for the, allowed in the zone. The second item was the developer should not agree to, agree not to develop additional properties on Norman Court. I don't think that's a legal condition that can be put on it, but it's also everything that, any other work that would have to be done here, we'd have to come back for a whole nother, whole nother review in front of the planning board. So we'd be doing this whole process again, so. I don't think that one is, is a worry. And for it to approve by the planning board, official state biologists for habitats and species of concern should be required. After that, developers should be required to follow any resulting state recommendations to protect species, habitats of concern. As was brought up, the spice bush would probably be the, the main, the main biological concern. As was brought up, the spice bush would probably be the main biological concern on this lot, and if the locations that Sarah had noted here were down in this back area, up against this wetland here, and down on the slope, the developer would be agreeable to having a biologist come back out and map those locations as a condition of approval, and treat them, you know, as recommended. For the most part, it's, they do thrive closer to the wetlands, so that's most likely why the one that was noted was down by this wetland here and down on this slope, which we are trying to stay out of completely and keep that undisturbed. So, I don't think that would be an issue as far as the development itself, and we could take measures to protect those as a condition. For construction is allowed, oh, missed one. Where the construction begins, developer should be required to seek and follow recommendations from state biologists how to eradicate the knotweed and prevent spreading between the developer's properties, as well into a budding, a budding's properties in the town of Broadway. I know the developer also doesn't want to deal with knotweed, it is a nuisance, but anything that's found on site, an effort will be taken to take care of it, but I'm not sure how much it can be legislated that you can prevent it from spreading across the town. It's something that's, as the owner will be maintaining and, you know, maintaining ownership of the development, it's something he's going to want to keep a minimum, just inherently. For construction is allowed, developer should be required to have main DEP study outfielding the wetland on lots one and two, anticipated fill of remaining land and containment and diversion of the stream on lot two will affect the LSU law wetland. That one is kind of inherently covered by submitting to the DEP for permit by rule. We did do that, we submitted that, and we also, excuse me, we did also go kind of take an extra step to provide the previous favor parking area, and that treats the majority of the high pollutant load area coming off the site. So, I believe we've kind of taken extra efforts to address that as well. No pesticides and herbicides should be allowed on lots one and lot two, since the budding's wetland is downhill and downstream of the proposed development. That's one where you can request that minimal herbicides and pesticides will be utilized. Again, it's one, it's something the developer doesn't really want to have to use a lot of that anyway, but again, the intent was to try and prevent as much pollutant load downstream as possible with the design presented here. Before clearing trees, develop, developer should clearly mark which trees are to be retained on lots one and two, and while it's ideal to keep certain trees, I think the development will kind of dictate which trees will have to come down. We'll make sure to protect any trees that are beyond that lot line and supplement with landscape trees to whatever extent planning board feels appropriate. I think that's also item eight with the wooded buffer, I think that kind of addresses that issue as well. I guess. And I did have a comment as well about the strain of the development on the community, and that's something that we had kind of discussed before, how we had to go to each utility and make sure that they could supply, you know, the water and sewer service that was required for it, as well as the report that the school district gives to the town manager every year indicating that, you know, there is sufficient capacity and what the state of the school system is, so I think all those were covered.
Did you say that again? Oh, okay. The comp plan? Okay. So, in the comprehensive plan, it talks about the schooling and the infrastructure for fire, police, and stuff like that, and it's what Jerry was just noting, that in the new comp plan, it targets all of those.
I think James has that information, because they're pulling it together for the comp plan.
Yes, he probably does.
We've asked to see that, I know Phil has a couple times, you know, from the sewer, the water, the school.
Yeah, well, I think the problem with it is getting them to say more than, we have sufficient capacity and we'll let you know, and it becomes a problem, it's a little bit difficult getting them to kind of, I won't say it's like nailing jello to a tree, but I will say it's definitely an exercise as far as the school districts, again, you know, they report to James every year, and he is working on that, he may have that, I know that we do have current figures, that's a little bit outdated, but current figures are currently a whole whopping four students higher than like nineteen eighty or nineteen ninety, so we're kind of in the superintendent, you know, all of, the one thing I will tell the board is that when these applications are received, and the public may not be aware of this either, when these applications are received, the developers are required for any of these to submit a digital copy as well, which goes to Terry, Terry immediately sends it out to Hannah, it also goes to police, it goes to fire, this, you know, everybody gets to take a kick at the can, so to speak, water, sewer, everybody has to get a kick at the can to make sure that, before you guys even see it, they've reviewed it, so if they have a problem, they can tell us that they can't support it.
And that's all we really look for in the application, is just for those letters saying that that is, that they have adequate supply?
Yes, and you'll probably never see an application that does not have one of those letters saying they have adequate supply, because if there is not adequate supply for water, not adequate supply for sewer, if police, fire, if any of the services feel like they're overburdened and they say that, dollars to donuts, the applicant would probably, you know, remove their application, knowing that they're not going to be able to get the services for whoever they're putting in.
And we do often see conditions by chief plant for fire, that he needs this or that, or, so they do take it, look at it, consider it, and give us as a board recommendations to put onto the project, so it is covered.
Yeah, fire is typically who we get those comments from, as far as hydrants, turnarounds, things like that.
They have a little more skin in the game and bigger equipment to play with, but they are all reviewed, and I don't know that the general public is aware that they are all reviewed by all of these entities, but they are.
So, you said you were going to agree to bring a biologist into, for the spice bush?
If it's pleasure of the board as a final condition of approval, that'd be something that you're willing to do and get that, bring them in to have that on file, it's likely, especially if it's, if Sarah has them located in the areas where they actually are located, it won't have a large impact on the development, it's basically going to be, you know, we have to put protections up so that people don't remove them, you know, accidentally, and make sure they stay safe on the side.
I think that that's an important thing, I'd like to see that as a condition for the project, that a biologist does do that review and make recommendations.
Yeah, and while they're asked that, make the recommendations to, so the knotweed doesn't get spread all over the place also. I mean, I, if you're going to bring a biologist in, they're going to look at it anyway, right? Yeah, so, because that's the two important things I really took from that report.
To that.
I missed one of that. Did you say that again? I couldn't hear you.
Oh, the knotweed.
Oh, the knotweed.
Yeah, that's all. You're bringing a biologist in anyway, so.
Yeah, it's a double-edged sword, right? You know, there's knotweed, so how do you deal with knotweed?
Right.
But then, we don't want to put a herbicide down.
Right.
To kill it.
Yeah.
You know, we will, the entire development area will get stripped of the material that's there, I mean, there's no question.
Yeah.
So, the area that we're going to develop, that is going to go away. I don't think I'm going to go the whole eighteen acres and search out knotweed.
No, no, I'm not asking.
It's growing naturally in the woods, I think that's where it lies.
I think we're talking about the roadway, correct?
I have a question that might kind of address a little bit more of what I read in the one that I read out to you. Do you guys, okay, first of all, where is, so I guess I got a couple of questions, where does the pavement currently stop on Norman?
The pavement currently stops right up here.
Back there, beyond where the development's going, okay. I guess, so my question would be, it appears to me from the letter that I read out loud, that the concern is that with the trackout, because, and I, trust me, I had knotweed, I get it, they're concerned about any of those rhizomes being stuck in the tires of the trucks going out, which I, as the code officer, have to be concerned about trackout anyways from your site, and if you're mucking up the roads. Do you have, what do you have, do you have anything in mind for preventing excessive trackout, because whatever prevents the trackout will also more than likely prevent any knotweed that might be getting tracked in that soil or getting tracked out?
What's proposed is a typical stabilized road control entrance.
Okay.
So, it'd be at the existing entrance, it'd be a certain length of larger stone that's intended to take off all the.
Okay, I didn't know where it was paved, if you guys are still planning to do that, so I didn't know if you had something else in mind, because that will remove most of whatever might be in those tires.
The location of that's probably going to vary depending on what portion's getting, is getting developed at the time, but it'll be at the end of the road area.
I have strict requirements, I'm going to require it be somewhere between where you're digging up and the end of the road, okay?
Okay, yeah.
I mean it.
So, I think I'd also like to, somebody mentioned, I don't remember who, but somebody mentioned about the subcontractors on my current project in the United States, and that they, I know that they treat that like a drag strip, and unfortunately, in that situation, you know, I developed that site and I sold house lots to Patco Construction, and then once I sell a house lot, it's beyond my control what they do. I know my guys, you know, I'm constantly on my guys, I have three employees, so this project will be done by my employees, and any subcontractors will be subcontractors directly from me, and they won't be acting that way. Yeah, it's hard to, that's hard to control, period.
It's hard to control that when, I mean, you're talking about individuals.
I mean, fourteen houses, you know, you have, you know, six or seven different subcontractors for each house, five houses going on, and none of them work for me, I can't, you know.
Along the lines of traffic, I know there were concerns about the use of Old Pine Hill and the traffic that's increased there, but the developer isn't responsible for stop signs and crosswalks and things on the town road.
Yeah, that has to go through the state.
So, I understand the concern of the public, that it would be great to be able to just throw speed bumps in and stop signs and lights and crosswalks, but as far as the development goes, it's not under that jurisdiction.
Right.
And the initial traffic assessment that we provided basically shows, and the reason we did it so detailed is, this one is kind of dictated by trips it generates, where if you generate too many trips, you end up having to deal with second entrance out here, so it's, you know, we're sure to make that detailed and be as cautious as we could with it, so.
I will say for the people that are concerned both here and at home, that James Belissimo, the town manager, is the one that reaches out to the state for, the Department of Transportation to send along any comments or concerns that residents have about the roads, so they can email him if they want something. The town manager, James Belissimo, he's right on the website. You're welcome. He's the one that can make that contact to pass those concerns along for residents, not guaranteeing that anything can be done, but at least he knows who to reach out to so your concerns can be heard, because I don't want people thinking that their concerns were not heard here tonight, it's just that they're not necessarily being directed to the people who can do something, so send you to wherever you can get you some help.
So, with the water flow, I mean, how it states is the water flow going, you basically can't change the water that's flowing, correct? Like, the amount of water?
As far as the drainage, the stormwater runoff, no, what we're basically doing is we're increasing the size of the culvert here. As the stormwater modeling indicated that it was not sufficient in the bigger storms to hold that back, and it would overtop, overtop the road and damage it. So, that was upgraded, as well as it was put into a pipe here. This, the drainage swale that was out here was not delineated as a wetland when the wetland study was done. This larger wetland down here, this is the one that has the multiple large culverts going through the cul-de-sac at Haplinger Lane, and this is, this is the wetland that we were trying to protect from, you know, the parking area up here, and it was the main reason that we wanted to put in this, you know, the pervious pavement out there to treat all of that high pollutant load coming from that area, treat it down through that filter, and have, you know, a stable, clean, cooled-down water coming out through into that wetland to prevent any of the harmful side effects that there were kind of discussed in the public.
It's just one of the concerns was the budding properties just want to make sure that the water basically stays, like, it's not going to be a drought over there, you're not re-diverting the water?
Correct, no, it's all going, it's going to be going in the same, in the same general direction.
Okay.
It's just we're trying to get it treated for.
And then, so, I guess there's two different things, one is wetland versus wetlands, like, you have land that gets wet.
Yeah.
And then you have wetlands that are noted and they're on the map as. So, on lot one, there's a specific amount of gravel that you can add to the wetland.
That's, no, those are, that's mapped wetlands.
Okay.
But the isolated, smaller wetlands are, you can impact those without the full permitting because NRPA and DEB have determined that it's not a harmful impact, and for this particular project, it allows us to keep, if this wetland is impacted and filled and allowed the development to be closer to that, it keeps it away, further away from.
From the back, right.
From the back, larger wetland.
Yeah.
And in this case, if there is spice bush in that area, it keeps it further away as well.
What all are you trying to filter out with that pervious? You're talking about like parking lot runoff?
Yeah, basically, you know, hydrocarbons, general suspended solids.
Oils, coolants.
Yeah, all that stuff.
Anything that leaks from vehicles.
Right, and we basically, we used the DEP model for, you know, the capacity and the runoff through that to design it, so it's basically getting treated to a project that would have to be, if it was big enough to be regulated by the DEP, this one's small enough, so they don't truly require any of this, this is just kind of an effort to go above and beyond and make sure that this wetland doesn't see any degradation.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm ninety-nine percent sure that Mr. Belissimo said that we cannot do anything on that road because it's town, but we may be wrong, I may be wrong, I may have the.
So, after the last meeting, which I wasn't here for, but Lejay was here, Lejay reached out to Dean, who was our, one of our in-house transportation planners, asking about Old Pine Hill Road and any traffic calming, any types of that could be put in, and his response was, "Old Pine Hill Road that'll lie very as a townway and under local jurisdiction." He would prefer to go visit the site before he made any recommendations as to what the board may consider requesting, but he said, "At a minimum, they may be looking at requiring a high-visibility crosswalk marking, parking restrictions on crosswalk approaches, adequate nighttime lighting levels, and crossing warning signs," for examples. Additional considerations could be a raised crosswalk or in-road signage, and he's willing to go and visit the site and give comments to the board.
So, I apologize, it appears I was wrong, so now I'm wondering which road James and I were actually not talking about the same road. Not the first time.
Could have been a different part or Pine Hill, I don't know.
Yeah, who knows?
Probably not. That'd be a selectmen thing.
Yeah.
Right, it'd be a town. What we would be trying to do is either there'd be like a crosswalk that goes to the library, or something of that.
That would be what the library was requesting, yes.
So, it would make sense to me, anyway, that we encourage the public who have concerns about that to take that up with the selectmen and the town and James Belissimo.
With the speed, yes.
Yeah, not with us on this project.
I will say that the last traffic study, the, they basically said that the speed, I get what the public says versus what the traffic studies say, but the last time the traffic study happened, there was no issues with overspeeding. It's, it's a 1% issue, it's a very small amount of people that do speed, with speeding, it's, they set the averages, and you see the things on the road, and they, they go by that, and when they go by that, a lot of people see that, they slow down and they get that, but at the same time, it's, that's what the testing goes by, and there hasn't been that many speeding incidents from that study. Is there any other questions or concerns?
Yeah, I'm starting to run low on coffee, you know what that means, poison goes.
You won't sleep anyway, son, I'm there.
It's decaf, honey, but when it's out, I'm out. I don't think I had any other questions.
So for lot one, for the buffer in the back, would you be willing to say, like designate a no-cut zone, or just a certain area that they won't, I know the spice bush is out back there.
Just at the back property line here?
Yeah, yeah.
I'd be hesitant to do that, just due to the fact that it was, unless the spice butch, spice butch needed protecting back there.
Okay.
We'd take that under consideration and add that to it.
Okay.
The lot itself still does have, you know, some area left, you know, to leave that as a protection.
Okay.
But I try to encumber it as little as possible, just due to the fact that it's going to be a separate, separate developer out there, it's going to be a separate house builder.
Right, right, because we're just talking about the lot, and just, it's a buildable lot at that point, and your building footprint can be within a certain area.
Correct.
That's going to be a separate permit, anyway.
I don't see my memo from, is there any waivers that we're granting or voting on?
I'm pretty sure if there were, they would have already been granted.
Okay, all right, just making sure, so now...
Now, at this point, you can consider preliminary approval and provide a list of changes you want made before final, or you can ask for changes and not approve the preliminary and do that next time.
So going through these requested conditions, well, first, let's, let's discuss out-of-character buildings, I guess that was a concern.
Yeah.
I think that if I, if I could speak to that, you know, I can appreciate that, you know, and as a developer, there's, there's a balancing act of, you know, the highest and best use of a property, meeting the demand for housing around here, and the environmental impact. Typically, I build townhouses, if I built townhouses, this development would be this big, and we would, we would, you know, damage four times the environmental impact. As far as out-of-character, this is directly across the street from an auto repair garage, so this is not, you know, there are residential houses there, and I don't want to minimize that for sure, these are definitely, you know, they're going to be attractive buildings, but they're definitely three-story buildings, and I definitely weighed those, that consideration greatly when we looked at doing townhouses or doing these, we opted for the townhouses to minimize the environmental impact, and also with the auto repair garage across the street, we thought that they were more fitting to the neighborhood.
Now, you won't be able to see these buildings from the Old Pine Hill Road, is that correct?
You'd have to be kind of slowing down and looking back in towards it.
Right, it'd be very difficult to see it, so...
Can't say they'd be invisible from there, but it'd be an effort.
Right, okay.
And it is, you know, in that neighborhood, granted there aren't any three-story buildings, but there are condos right across the street, Pine Hill, from Pine Hill Road, and then there are also my townhouses not far from there, so, so this kind of is a neighborhood of, you know, like, I know that, that the R1, R2 line is right here, so it is just outside of that R1, R2, but that neighborhood really, with the condos and my other townhouses there, and the library, and the auto repair garage, is, you know, I don't think that they're, I don't think they're on a place, or I would have opted to do the townhouses.
You guys have anything to add on that?
In regards to what, as far as your, an out-of-character building?
Yeah.
That's, it's an odd turn of phrase, but I think, as far as saying an out-of-character building, because when you drive through any neighborhood, what do you see, you know, unless you are in literally a development that's been built by just one person, you see a variety of houses, so what in fact defines an out-of-character building? If they wanted to build a all-black Roman Gothic style, that I would consider an out-of-character building. An apartment building that's literally a stone's throw from the R1 line where we have multiple multifamilies, I don't consider out-of-character. When we were walking on the site as we came out towards that single house lot, because again, when I approve the building permits, I have to consider all the ordinances, this book is what everybody wants, and, but as you walk out of Norman Court, you look across, you see the other buildings, you see large buildings, and we do have the height restriction of 35 feet, so nothing can be bigger than that, so nothing can really be built out-of-character. I, I take a little bit of issue with that term, just because it's not really clearly defined as to what they're considering out-of-character.
It's subjective.
It's too, yeah, it's too subjective, because if somebody wants to do something with some nice pillared architecture next to a farmhouse, am I, who am I to tell somebody, no, you can't style your house the way you want, but I do get the point where it applies to this, and the neighbors' concerns with it being an apartment building, but that having been said, again, like literally, you can't swing a dead cat without hitting the R1 line, and R1, I can't even tell you how many apartment buildings I've been in, and I haven't even been here a full year yet in the R1 zone, so to me, no, not, not meeting, I don't think it passes the straight face test of saying it would be out-of-character for that area.
Les, what is the visual sightline of any abutters to the buildings where they're going to be? Are they going to have direct sightline to your buildings, or will there be?
The abutist is going to spoke earlier, but I couldn't hear what he said, I have a lot of trouble with the area.
He said he was in favor of it.
He's in favor.
Yeah, he's on board with the full plan.
He's directly across the street, he is...
Right.
Yeah, Les.
Les, you're microphone.
You gotta use the mic. You speak into the microphone.
You gotta use the pointer.
Sorry.
The middle one? So he is this property right here, and this, the owner of this property spoke at the last meeting.
Last meeting, yeah.
And then, you know, I think it was mentioned that, you know, I gave this parcel to my sister, so in five or six years when she retires, we're going to build her a house back there, so that's, that's all that's going to go on here. The only other, the only other person on the street is, I believe his name is Norman, and so, but I haven't heard anything from him.
And then, just also to go with the out-of-character buildings, I know a little bit further down on Pine Hill Road, there is a apartment building that is 35 feet high, it's not too far away from there, and that is also an R2 zone.
Yes.
So that's not that far away, just want to make that a note as well.
Which one? Which one? And...
I can't say what's the name of it.
Did you say Old Pine or Pine?
No, Pine Hill.
Pine Hill.
I do, I do want to address one thing, so while I recognize that because this is a project, that they, you know, the request for an environmental review for the spice bush is not, not at all out of line, okay? That having been said, in regards to the rest of the tree cutting issues, yes, there were a lot of trees cut in that area recently to make all of the new homes on Halflinger Lane, so, I mean, there's already been some deforestation there, but going down there, I see it's been done, in my opinion, and as somebody who has to do some MS4 inspections down there, as well as code inspections, it's been done responsibly. Now that having been said, if he was not, not just this developer, literally every developer we've had come before us, that people have had concerns with them cutting the trees, if they chose to just chop wood and cut these trees up, we couldn't stop them, they own the land, so I think it's very, I think it's very responsible and ethical to get the environmental review for the spice bush, but again, we do not, unless you're in a shoreland zone, we cannot control somebody cutting trees, and I want to make that clear. And even in a shoreland zone, they can do so with certain permissions, or if like the one at the end of Norman Court, that one is rotting, it's going to be not, it doesn't have much longer, if this, if this doesn't get approved, or if Les, in his developing court petition, decide to not do it, that tree is still ultimately going to have to come down, because it is going to be a major safety hazard. So, as much as people get concerned about the tree cutting, please know that there is very limited that the town has any legal right to restrict, so I just feel like that should be said.
While I agree with you, Irish, I would, I would say that the reason we have the process that we do to have a public hearing and give the townspeople a chance to voice their concerns and opinions is important, and I think that it's important that they get heard, and I think that it's important that we let the developer hear it, not that they have a requirement to do anything, we can't insist on that, but in the spirit, as Phil would often say, in the spirit of good neighbors, it alerts everybody to being on the same page and just trying to find a compromise.
No, I absolutely agree with you, Rick, I really, I agree with you that they should be heard, and they should have the right, and especially when it pertains to a buffer, but what I'm saying is, I want people to understand that the board may be able to say, you want a buffer, the board can't just randomly tell everybody they can't cut any trees down.
Right, right.
So that's, I just want to make it clear, so they don't think that the board is not doing what they're supposed to.
Right, right.
Because legally, you can't tell them they can't cut any trees.
Right.
You can tell them to leave a buffer, but you can't, I don't want people thinking that you're not doing what you're supposed to.
Right, right.
But I do believe, yes, the developer should hear what the neighbors have to say about it.
Also, with the property lines, there's a 10-foot buffer from both sides, that it's basically, if you're cutting down trees, you have to talk to the abutting neighbors, because it's technically every other tree, one could be yours, one could be the neighbor's, and how that goes is, you usually need consent from the abutter to cut trees down, up, up to 10 feet from the property, correct?
From the property line, yeah, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that the board has a limitation on what you can restrict for tree cutting, that's, I guess where I was going with that, but...
We can't pick the trees.
Main is, main is everything.
If I could too, I'd add about the trees, you know, one of the things, you know, I am a developer, but I also am environmentally responsible, and, you know, if you look at this entire parcel, this entire parcel is 38 acres, and, you know, I'm developing this piece right here, and I'm going to put a house here for my sister, and the rest of this is going to remain forested, and it's going to remain forested because we've maximized the trip count for this road, so we can't put any more on here, so this, really, you know, in the comprehensive plan, we talk about cluster developments, it doesn't get much more of a cluster development than this, and so technically, this isn't a cluster development, but really, it meets the definition and the spirit of cluster development, and again, all of this land here, you know, there's going to be one house back here, so, I mean, you know, I think if I had followed a plan that I had approved previously, we built 52 houses with this in the Vena Estates, this would have been, you know, I don't know, 27, 30 houses would have went in here, road, infrastructure.
A lot more impacts.
The amount of environmental impact would have been, you know, horrible.
And I think that's important to note, too, I mean, the requirement of free space percentage-wise is actually relatively small in comparison to the size that you're going to develop, but, but when developments have this much, significantly more than the percentage required, it's a good thing.
Right.
It protects that land in, you know, forever.
Yeah. Okay, so one of the conditions would be to have the spice bush plants noted and do that study with the IW?
Just be a state licensed biologist.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Doesn't have to be a state group.
It'll be a lot quicker.
Okay.
Someone else can.
All right. For the invasive plants, just like what Irish said earlier, with the requirements that you have to do the dirt for the road.
The trackout.
The track, yeah, the trackout, which that got voted in last, last section for the MS4, the new requirements for that should be adequate, let's see, what else? We don't really have a say of what, what trees they, they...
No, but the buffer.
The buffer, the wooded, so number eight, the developer should leave a wooded buffer on the sides and backs of both lots to ensure that the mature trees near the property lines are not killed by heavy equipment cutting through.
I don't think that can be a true requirement, the setbacks have to be adhered to in development, then beyond that, it will be, you know, having to adhere to the requirement just for, you know, the trees at the lot.
Right, right.
And, you know, we're only going to clear the trees that we need to clear.
Right.
And as far as the root balls of trees that we leave, I mean, we have to dig what we have to dig, but we're not going to be randomly digging all the backyard.
Right, right.
You know, if we have to put a foundation in, the tree's not going to be within 25 feet of that building anyways.
Right, and you're going to want to have enough separation of the tree line versus where your buildings are going to be, because you don't want pine trees crashing into your houses or in your apartments, so, I understand that, is, I guess another condition would just be, the minimal use of pesticides and herbicides, that would just be a condition, can't say that you can't use it, but I would just limit it to, just say the minimal amount.
I don't plan on using any unless, maybe poison ivy or something, but I don't, most of this is going to get bulldozed up into a pile and ran through a screener, so I don't, you know, sit there for a year in a pile, it'll all decompose.
Right, okay. Then, Tanuvio had that question about survey by main DEP?
About the spice bush.
Okay, that was about the spice bush, okay, okay, so that's the same one of that.
Yeah, let me just double check that one. Hold on, I stuffed it in the packet information. My eyeballs on. Yes, so, this is another thing that's in this, Tanuvio, that had the, the letter I read, I think something that, well, it's just, so they're taking care of that, who did the wetland mapping, using the online wetland mapping?
No, it was done by... No, it was done by Morse.
Okay, so you actually had it done.
Correct.
Okay, so that, so that takes care of her first concern. Second concern, olive smells amazing, just for the record. We already addressed that. Okay, so then I'm going to pass this along to James for discussion about the traffic thing, to get it, about the reduction of speed that she was asked about.
Right, okay.
Did we have the stormwater management plan reviewed by a third-party engineer? In the memo from Hannah, the last one, it said that we could, we should consider, or we could determine if we wanted that or not. And I didn't know if we, if we wanted that or not. It just says, "The applicant has submitted a stormwater management plan. The planning board should determine if this plan should be peer-reviewed by a third-party engineer."
We had, yeah, we had sent everything to the DEP just for the PBR approval and generally, if they see anything that they...
They would've flagged it.
Yeah, they didn't turn to be a mass concern, they'd flag it. For this particular project, it's the stormwater study that we did technically isn't even required. It's, it beats the threshold to go into chapter 500, but doesn't meet the threshold to have the stormwater analysis done. So sending in the PBR and having them accept it basically takes care of all the stormwater. But we kind of tried to go the extra step to show that, you know, we had the report that said it wasn't impacting that downstream.
Okay.
Kind of going above and below.
Okay, all right. So that should be adequate for that. All right, so I guess the only two conditions are just the minimal use of pesticides and herbicides and then the...
Biologist.
The biologist for identifying spice bush plants and limiting, I guess, just identifying them and then possibly staying away from them.
We do have, we have biologist that we utilized to do that prior to previous.
It would know it on the plan.
Yeah, it'd be noted on the plans, yeah, okay. All right. So after that, I guess I'll make a motion that we find the preliminary application complete.
We already did that.
Oh, okay, yeah. All right, approval of preliminary plan with conditions, with the conditions. So I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary subject to the conditions.
Can we, can the preliminary be approved with those conditions as final?
I'm, I'm getting the wording. Please hold. Please, I'll next to go. When granting approval to a preliminary plan, the board shall state the conditions of such approval, if any, with respect to the specific changes which it will require in the final plan, the character and extent of the required improvements for which waivers may have been requested, and which the board finds may be waived without jeopardy to the public health, safety, and general welfare, and the construction of item, or the construction items for which cost estimates and performance guarantees will be required as prerequisite to the approval of the final plan. So you can approve the preliminary plan and say, "These are our conditions that you need to meet before we'll approve your final plan," or "These will be conditions that will also be placed on the final plan." I will say that again.
So we can set the conditions to be met before the final plan is accepted, or we could adopt it into being in the final plan conditions.
Yes, so if there are changes you want made before you will approve the final plan, say those, and if there are conditions that you want to be placed on the final plan as a condition of final approval, such as, you know, you have to do this before we'll issue a bailing permit, things like that.
Okay, so I guess at that point, the condition, the one condition would just be the biologist with the spice bush for the preliminary approval before the final. And then for the final would be the minimal use of herbicides and pesticides.
Yeah, so the, what I understand is that the board wants to see the study from the biologist showing the spice bush before you will approve the final plan.
Correct, correct.
And then when you approve the final plan, the thing about the herbicides and the pesticides will be a condition on there.
Yes, okay.
What she said.
So I've made the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you, thank you.
What she said.
Yes.
That was a lot smarter than trying to...
Thank you, Hannah. All right. There is no new business, so we can skip through that. Second public comment is open to non-agenda items. Okay, seeing no one come up, I'll close that. Informational items. Girls have any informational items?
We have our training next week at 6:00.
Yes.
6:00 with myself, Lijay, and our attorney, Phil Softier.
And that is after our sidewalk.
Yes.
But I will send out a reminder.
What time's the sidewalk?
Five.
For what project?
For Wetland Solar.
Yeah, thanks. I guess you said that last time, didn't you?
Again, make sure you have all your questions written out so we can make the most use of the time.
And if anyone would like to come in and continue watching the video, we will make it available if you let us know.
Laptop's always available for you to come in and sit and watch it.
I gotta get the first hour in.
We only made 49 minutes of it. They told me it was an hour and a half. It turned out to be a three and a half hour video, not what we wanted.
Did you guys end up watching it all yesterday?
Not all of it.
Okay.
You can...
Duly noted, I did not touch my microphone.
I would like to give Mr. Gennarali a little personal round of applause from the BCM media people for not touching his microphone. Good job. Hey, hey, Jerry, I saw that. I don't think we have anything else for the planning board right now.
Okay. Make the motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, good night.
Bye, folks.